to come online. This is October 13th. It's a meeting of the Pecosin City Council and like all 13ths, there's, we have some technical issues in getting on board. But we're here now and I'll call this meeting to order. If you could all please rise, I'll lead you in the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and thank you for the many blessings that we've received in our city. As we deliberate issues, the issues before us this evening, we ask for a portion of your wisdom that we keep those citizens in mind, that our decisions impact. As well, Lord, we always ask for your presence and your guidance to all those that serve our public safety, whether they're local or state or federal. And also, we couldn't exist here today, Father, without those who serve in our military, especially those that serve us in foreign lands. We ask for your presence to be felt by those as well as their families here at home. And we ask all of this in your son's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thanks, everyone, again, for your patience as we move forward. We have a couple of special presentations and a relatively short agenda this evening. First, we have a presentation from Parks and Rec. And Dave, you and Gretchen, however y'all are going to present this, this is going to be a discussion of how Halloween is going to be observed in the city in a special event. So, thanks Gretchen.
Good evening, everyone. Well, first of all, we want to let everyone know and appreciate the time to be here this evening and let everyone know that Halloween is not canceled in the city. And we are very excited. And we know that the CDC has recommended a number of guidelines. And for a number of you at home, as you watch this, if you would, there are many recommendations there about how to have a safe and happy Halloween. So, we would recommend that if you have questions about what's best for you and your family, to take advantage of those recommendations. This year, we know that a number of families may not feel like they should leave their home. So, as a result, our department at Parks and Recreation feel that it's important to bring a little fun to the kids in the city of Pecosin. We're excited tonight to announce a program for children that will bring a little bit of Halloween to everyone. And you can participate by bringing the Boo Crew to you. If you go by Parks and Recreation and sign up your children, we recommend ages 10 and under by October the 26th, you can have a quick little visit from folks who are in full costume, the Boo Crew, to come and visit on the day of Halloween, October the 31st, probably in the afternoon before 6:00. Our goal is to visit everyone and bring them a small package of Halloween treats and goodies. And we're excited to share the Halloween fun with everyone. The way we can make sure we don't miss anyone is with your help at home, to come by Parks and Recreation and sign up in advance. So, October the 26th is the deadline. The Boo Crew will begin to put packages together for everyone. We plan to use gloves and masks to make sure that that's a safe operation. And then together, we will bring you a special little treat. We are excited to announce that some members of the advisory board will be part of the operation. And we even think some of them will be in costume to be part of our Boo Crew throughout the city. To date, we currently have 36 kids on the list. And we're excited to be able to help those and bring a little Halloween cheer to everyone while they're at home. We, if you're not at home, we plan to send an email to everyone that says, hey, don't forget we're stopping by. If you don't, if you miss us or miss the Boo Crew when they stop by, they'll leave it on the porch for you. So, if you have any questions, we certainly would like to let you know we're excited about it. For those at home, here's a couple of the really important details. In the package, we'll have, the Pecosin Public Library is going to offer a special Halloween Storytime during the night of Halloween. And we'll have a card and a bookmark in there for kids on how to log on and enjoy that activity too. So, you can catch those items on Channel 46 on Cox and 24 if you have Verizon FiOS. So, once again, our number is 868-3580. We ask that you don't call in. There is a way to do it online with the registration form, or you can stop by and see us at 8:30 Pecosin Avenue at the municipal building. And that's about all I have. We're really excited to bring a little Halloween festivities that's COVID-safe to the city and the kids of Pecosin.
Okay, thank you Gretchen. And thanks for, thanks to you and Dave and Parks and Rec Advisory Board, please pass along the thanks of the entire City Council for trying to make the best of the situation that we find ourselves in these days and moving that forward. So, thanks very much. Next, very important employee introduction. Not that all of our employees aren't important, but this one will be of particular significance. So, Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of our community. It's my pleasure this evening to introduce to you and to the community Pecosin's next police chief. I'll call him up in a second. Stephen Keats is his net, Kate's is his name. It's spelled one way and pronounced the other. Sorry, Kate. And he is here with his family this evening. He had his sworn in, swearing-in ceremony earlier today. Mr. Kate's, now Chief Kate's, he is a 26-year veteran of the City of Roanoke Police Department, serving most recently as the captain in charge of the Investigations Unit. And he has had command-level experience, really in a broad brush of police specialties to include professional standards, support services, geographic and community policing, as well as 15 years in patrol, seven of which approximately as sergeant. So, he brings a broad breadth of police experience. We're pleased to have him here. I'll let him complete his introduction and I'll call him up at this time.
Chief, come on up.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Those of you watching from home, I appreciate this opportunity. As Mr. Wheeler said, I've been around the business for a while, 26 years in law enforcement. I grew up in Southside, Virginia. I've spent 26 years in Roanoke in southwest Virginia. And my family and I are very excited to be, to become part of the Pecosin community. And everybody so far that we've interacted with has been very welcoming, very pleasant, and we're just excited to be a part of such a vibrant community and get to know everybody. I look forward to getting to know each of you and the members of our community. And I appreciate this opportunity. I've expressed this morning my appreciation for Mr. Wheeler and Mr. Wilson and the trust that they've shown in selecting me for this position. And my one goal is to see that that trust is not misplaced. And so, I appreciate this opportunity.
Okay, welcome. Would you like to introduce your wife?
Yes. Mindy, you can come on up for just a minute. Come on.
Everybody at Pecosin will see you as well.
Ling and all. Yes. Let me take that off for just a minute. This, this is my wife. Her name's Melinda, goes by Mindy. And she'll, she'll be joining me in a few weeks. We've got some business to settle in Roanoke. She's going to take care of that and for us. And then her and my, our youngest will be joining, joining me. And we're looking forward to being a part of the community.
Okay, welcome both of you. And look forward to your service for the next several, several years. So, really appreciate y'all coming and really appreciate the selection process that you went through. I want to reach out, back out to staff and our serving chief. And I know he's going to get up and introduce another thing, but we'd be remiss if we didn't mention that Percy filled a gap for us and, and we appreciate that as well. But welcome Chief Kate's.
Thank you, sir.
And look forward to working with you. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Next item on the agenda is an audience for visitors. If anybody would like to address council on any subject, now is that time. And if there's a public hearing for something that you're here for, just wait until a public hearing. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the audience for visitors and ask council for consideration of the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve our minutes of the regular session of September 28th, 2020.
Second.
Okay, motion made. Second, we approve the minutes of the regular session of September 28th. Questions or comments? And seeing none, Evie, please.
Certainly, thank you. Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilman Canela?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Ah.
Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven, zero.
Okay, thank you very much. One item on the agenda for a public hearing this evening, and this is a request for a conditional use permit by Victory Church for a farmer's market at Zero Victory Boulevard, tax map parcel 18, tax one, tax 121.
So, making a presentation for this conditional use permit for Zero Victory Boulevard. This request is to operate a weekly farmer's market on the subject parcel. The property is currently zoned R and D for research and development. Farmer's markets are not specifically permitted within this district and therefore they're asking for a CUP under Article One, Section 1-8 of our zoning ordinance. This was brought to the Planning Commission in their September meeting and was recommended for approval by a vote of seven to zero. The location is an 11 and 3.36 acre parcel north of Victory Boulevard, which is owned by Victory Church. The parcel is undeveloped and partially wooded, save for about three acres of cleared grass, which would be where the farmer's market takes place. There is a rough gravel entrance, but no paved parking area, and about 850 feet of frontage on Victory Boulevard near the city limits. All adjacent properties are undeveloped, with the exception of the Victory Church property to the west, which fronts East Yorktown Road. So, here's an aerial of the property. As you can see, everywhere nearby is wooded. And that stretch of cleared area off to the west is Victory Church's other parcel. This is the zoning. As you can see, everywhere adjacent is zoned, the blue for R and D, with the exception of an undeveloped parcel to the north, which is zoned for single-family residential. So, the district is research and development slash office, which calls for light industrial, manufacturing, and office uses within the big woods. Retail, service, and childcare are allowed as accessory uses only, but standalone commercial and residential uses are prohibited. House of worship are allowed, as well as traditionally accepted accessory uses allowed with a conditional use permit. But as the proposed use is temporary and seasonal in nature, we see that it would have negligible impact on any current or future development for this parcel. Here's some pictures of the property as it exists today. As you can see, it's completely undeveloped, open field. This is the current entrance to the property. And this is the gravel driveway connecting it to Victory Boulevard. Note that this gravel drive and everything up to that fence gateway is actually the right-of-way for Victory Boulevard, since it is wider than most of our other right-of-ways. Right, so the proposed use is for a farmer's market for vegetables, fruits, and various other homestyle items. The applicant indicates they are operating on Saturdays, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. They anticipate around 25 vendors, 25 parked vehicles, and around 50 to 75 patrons at any given time. They have been in contact with someone from the Pecosin Police Department, which mentioned to them that around 50 to 60 cars maximum would be acceptable on the property for traffic safety. And there is no permanent structures associated with this use. Our zoning ordinance does define farmer's markets and states that they are a place where farmers or other people who are engaged in truck farming gather regularly for the purpose of selling produce and goods produced at their farms, which includes the sale of seafood. So, here's some pictures taken off of Facebook showing you, this is what the use looks like in action. You can see no permanent structures, pretty well spaced apart. So, we have some proposed conditions for this use. Some of these are standard conditions that we've applied to other conditional use permits. The remainder are based on the zoning conditions for York County's regulations for farmers and flea markets, since we do not have that in our zoning code currently. So, number one, the use will comply with all local, state, and federal permits, licenses, and regulations. At the local level, this would mean they would need sign permits for any signs, as well as valid business licenses for the uses, which the applicant has confirmed at Planning Commission that they already have. Number two, the use permit shall be only for a farmer's market and shall not be interpreted for any other use that cannot be reasonably categorized as such. Number three, the use shall be operated during daylight hours a maximum of one day per week. Number four, goods, materials, or products associated with the use shall not be stored outdoors on the site when it is not in operation. Number five, the permittee shall be responsible for providing adequate off-street parking. No vehicles associated with this use shall be parked within the right-of-way of Victory Boulevard. Number six, the entrance to the property shall be operated so as to prevent dirt and debris from being tracked onto Victory Boulevard. Any such debris shall be removed as directed by the zoning administrator. Number seven, the permittee shall coordinate with the Pecosin Police Department to ensure adequate vehicle safety and traffic signage is provided to accommodate the use. Number eight, if any time the use is discontinued for a period of two or more years, the permit is null and void. And number nine, council reserves the right to review and amend the conditions as they see fit. With that, I'll be happy to take any questions.
Any questions? Okay. All right, so this is a public hearing. I'll open that public hearing to see if there's anybody who wants to speak on this issue.
Mayor, council, let me introduce myself. Many of you already know me. My name is Jamie Bowles. I'm the lead pastor of Victory Church. And I just want to thank you for the flexibility of public policy and being able to support various vendors and to promote the common good here at, here in Pecosin. Here at Victory Church, we exist for one reason, and that's to invite people to discover Jesus in everyday life. We do that in three ways. Sunday service, through small groups, and two, through community development. We apply economic structures and ways to help our community provide for the common good. So, I just want to say thank you for all of this.
All right, council, anybody else? Sorry. All right, if not, I'll close the public hearing and ask for consideration by council.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution approving a conditional use permit for the establishment of a farmer's market at Zero Victory Boulevard, tax map parcel number 18-1-121.
Second.
Okay, motion made. Second, that we approve the conditional use permit for Victory Church to operate a farmer's market here on Victory Boulevard. Any final questions or comments of council? Seeing none, Evie, please.
Certainly, thank you. Councilman Canela?
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Ah.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven, zero.
Okay, very well. Two items under new business. First is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a law enforcement mutual aid agreement. Percy, would you like to introduce this?
Our mutual aid agreement is probably always been in place since I've been here, 47 years ago. It was nice to have sister cities, if you needed them, to come in and assist. And we're certainly, as a city, on the receiving end a lot. So, this is what this is about, is the renewal of our mutual aid agreement. I assume y'all have a copy of this in front of you?
We do.
Basically, nothing has changed on this agreement, from what I understand. I read through it. I don't see anything that has changed, other than I think the city of Windsor, or the town of Windsor, has been added to it. But just in several weeks that, that I know of, we've probably used this mutual aid agreement two times that I know of. And that's when we had the device in the parking lot up here at Plaza that appeared to be a bomb. We had Newport News respond to that with our, with their bomb squad. And then we had an individual that I know wandered off and they called in a tracking dog. Fortunately, that person was found before the dog arrived. So, this is where we are on this. And I think it's a good, good thing to keep this, keep this alive. And it's always good to have the cavalry coming when you really need it.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
All right. In the agreement, just so that everybody recognizes, and you'll, if you come to the, any of the parades down here, all of these jurisdictions do help us out. But it's the cities of Chesapeake, Franklin, Hampton, Newport News, Norfolk, Pecosin, Portsmouth, Suffolk, Virginia Beach, Williamsburg, James City County, County of Gloucester, Acnamac County, Alawite, Northampton, Town of Smithfield, and now the Town of Windsor. So, appreciate the fact that we all work together and mutual aid means that we would also go to them.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We have our favor.
Yes, sir. So, I just want to make sure, I don't want to leave anybody out. And if I missed a city in some way or a county in some way, please forgive me. But we, I think council unanimously will support this. So, is there a motion to move forward with this issue?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution adopting a law enforcement mutual aid agreement. And you did leave out Surrey and York County.
I'm sorry, sir.
That's all right.
Second.
Okay, motion made. Second, that we approve the mutual aid agreement for law enforcement. Questions or comments? Evie, please.
Certainly. Excuse me, thank you. Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Canela?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Ah.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven, zero.
Okay, very well. Next item on the, on the agenda is a resolution making appointments to the Economic Development Authority. Is there somebody prepared to make a motion?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I move, if I can find my place, I move that we adopt a resolution making appointments to Economic Development Authority. And before I mention the names, I'd like to thank city manager Randy Wheeler for suggesting Cliff Bowen and to Vice Mayor Kerry Freeman for getting the other three to volunteer. So, appreciate that very much. The resolution with the names included would be Clifford T. Bowen, whose term would expire March 31st, 2024; Kathleen Fai, whose term would expire March 31st, 2021; Robert B. Derby, whose term would expire March 31st, 2023; and Raymond Yonello, whose term would expire March 31st, 2021.
Second.
Okay, got a motion made. Second, that we appoint those individuals. And I'll echo the comments that I, I think highly of all of them. I will abstain from this vote, as one of them is my father-in-law. So, so with that said, I, you know, I'll, I will call the roll and you guys can, can move forward, but you can mark me down as an abstention. Okay? So, motion made. Second, Evie, please.
Certainly. Vice Mayor Freeman?
Ah.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Canela?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the vote carried by a vote of six to zero with one abstention.
Okay, very well. All right, comments of the city manager, Randy?
Thank you. Four things this evening, I'll try to rebrief. One is just a highlight for the community. Council is aware that we began, we resumed our Saturday hours at the library this past weekend. For now, we're going to stick at a one-to-five schedule on Saturday, but we have essentially put back all the major elements of our previous schedule. Things continue to work very well there, and I just wanted to highlight that. I would like to, to highlight for the community that our next convenience site is the 24th. It would typically be on the 17th, but by tradition, we don't have one the same weekend as Seafood Festival. And we included that change in the calendar that we do every year. So, we sent, even though we're not having a seafood festival this coming weekend, we did send a notice to every home in the city saying it would be on the 24th. So, we're going to stick to that. And we'll use in addition to that calendar, our social media website and the city's electronic sign to reinforce that for folks. So, that will be two Saturdays from now. I wanted to, to thank Gretchen, her team, and the library for what they're trying to do with Parks and Recreation. We periodically have discussions as chief administrative officers about issues going on in the region. And I was able to brag on, on some of the things that they were doing. And by the next time we had that call and everyone was talking about Halloween, there were several other localities that had adopted similar programs. And I, I hope that, that our early work helped them do something nice in their community as well. Lastly, I just wanted to share, and I'm going to read this, because I don't want to get any of it wrong, but I just want to share about the early in-person voting and that people know about that and also how that's going. The early, no-excuse in-person voting for the city of Pecosin is being held actually in this room. And no-excuse in-person voting began September the 18th in City Hall, which is 500 City Hall, again, this room in this building. In addition to the regular hours, Monday through Friday, at 30 to 4:30, the registrar will be, have this building open and available for folks to vote on Saturday, the 24th, as well as Saturday, the 31st, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. for in-person absentee voting. The deadline to vote by absentee in person is 5:00 Saturday, October 31st. The last day to request a ballot to be mailed to you is Friday, October the 23rd, 2025 o'clock. If you have questions about that, please call the registrar's office. And I would note to you that in the in-person early voting, we have had almost 1,500 people that have come here to this room and have, have cast their ballot so far. 1,464 is the number that I think the registrar gave me as, as we passed at 5:00. So, clearly, it is working. And I would encourage folks that for whatever reason can't or don't feel comfortable casting a vote on Election Day, to, to consider coming here and going through that process. It is, is very well organized and, and you can get very, you can get in very quickly. I think my, my, my son's entire voting experience took about two minutes from the front door to, to getting his sticker. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, council directives this evening. Councilman Southall?
Yes, I'd like to welcome Police Chief Keats to the city of Pecosin. I'm certain he'll do a fine job here. And he'll find this probably the best place in the world that he has ever worked and will never want to leave here. I also would like to thank the citizens of Pecosin who volunteered to serve on the various boards and committees. We had five new applicants that I'm aware of tonight. We, we appointed four. And I would encourage more people to continue to apply. We need their help. There's always a position coming open from time to time. And it's good to have a good selection of people of various backgrounds. And thank the people at home for paying attention to the city government and thank the people who came here tonight to do the same.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilwoman Andrews?
I just wanted to thank Parks and Rec and the library, our city agencies, that are just doing a fantastic job at adapting to this unusual situation and supporting our families in Pecosin in such an innovative way. I know that the families that are participating in that appreciate it and welcome to our new police chief and his family. We're always happy to have new families here in Pecosin. And having a Virginia Tech grad, I made many passes by Roanoke for many years and hope you enjoy it on this side of the, the state. And thank you to Victory Church. I think a farmer's market is a great addition to our community. I've thought for years and years, gosh, I wish we had more farmer's markets in this area. So, it's fantastic to have one right here in town. And I have already voted here in City Hall, and it was easy and fast. And I would encourage anybody that doesn't want to stand in line on poll days to come up and do it, because the workers and volunteers are fantastic and it's an easy process.
All right, Councilman Canela?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Councilman Hux?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank our Commissioner of Revenue, Mr. Joe Cotrimilio, for helping us out tonight on very short notice with our media center. So, thank you, Mr. Cotrimilio. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Councilman Green?
Just like to add my welcome to Chief Keats and his wife, and if you run across my rap sheet, don't pay any attention to it, it's all a bunch of lies.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Nothing additional, just welcome to the chief and his family. We're looking forward to having you here in our town.
Okay. I met with the chief a few minutes before the meeting. I think he's going to be a great addition, Chief Keats, so welcome. Welcome to your family as well, glad to see you. And I know that some of council have already wrestled your arm, so, you know, just don't pay any attention to him. One of them's a VMI grad, we don't hold that against him, but...
Smother stew.
But welcome. But I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Percy yet again for filling a gap for us in that police role after serving so many years on our force, filling that gap for us in the short term while we did an exhaustive search for Chief Keats, and glad to see that turnover finally occur. But Percy, we'd be remiss not to thank you again for your service to our community.
It's an honor and a pleasure, sir.
And we thank you as well, and I'm just... All right, I think that's it for our meeting, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So, a move, Mr. Mayor?
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. We adjourn. Evie, please.
Certainly. Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Canela?
Aye.
Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, with the vote of 7-0, we are adjourned.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.